Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 4th, 2014. It's 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and no taxes at all costs.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the February 18th City Council Meeting and the February 25th City Council Workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Move approval second.
Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, presentation on Waste Pro Recycle Rewards winners. Mr. Landon, do you want to introduce this one?
Actually Diane is going to introduce this one. Before we get into the award, she's got a little presentation about how our recycling program is coming along and maybe let people know about hazardous waste too. So Diane, take it from here.
Yes, thank you very much, Council, Mayor. Before we, like you said, before we go to the presentation of the rewards, just a little bit of history on the solid waste contract. Our first contract with Waste Pro began in January of 2007. In 2012, the second contract came with Waste Pro as well. At the time, the Recycle Rewards Program and the Doorstep Hazardous Waste Program went into effect, and it was on June 1st of 2012. And just to let residents know that if they want to be involved in the Recycle Rewards Program, they can either call or go to that website, www.wastprorewards.com. And the Doorstep Hazardous Waste Program also came into effect on June 1st, and that is by appointment only. So if a resident wishes to have hazardous paints, oils, whatever picked up, they need to call Waste Pro at that number, 386-586-0800. And there are certain restrictions that do apply as far as the types of hazardous waste and the quantities, and they will let you know at the time. And all materials need to be placed at their front door or their garage door. Because of the hazardous nature, obviously, we don't want anything out at the curb. And it is just one Saturday each month that they do pick up, so just a little bit of information for that. What I also wanted to show you is, since we have had Waste Pro since 2007, I wanted to show the actual tonnages and how they've trended over the last seven years. And as you can see, the tons are on the left-hand side of the graph, and then each year below. And it's interesting because I spoke to Waste Pro representatives, and they say that these trends are very similar and are tied to the economy. So when the economy goes down, people buy less, so they have less trash. And you can see that on the little uptick there in the last year and a half or so, the economy is starting to get a little better. So it looks, you know, the waste stream is a little, starting to climb a bit again. But I am an optimist, and I'm thinking that the lower solid waste tonnages are because of the next slide. This is the recycling trends. And as you can see, again, same, the annual tonnages are on the left, and then the years at the bottom. And it's been on a very, very steady climb, which is what we want, it's what we're looking for. And you can see in mid-year 2012, and that's when the Recycle Rewards Program came into effect, is where it really started to take off. And it's interesting, though, these are annual tonnages. Prior to June of 2012, the city never produced in a month more than 400 tons of recycling. Since June of 2012, beginning with that month, we did produce over 400 tons of recycling, and in the 19 months since, 13 of them have been over 400 tons, and two of them have actually been over 500 tons. So the program is working. And I'm very proud of that, and it's really the reason why we're here tonight. The next slide doesn't look quite as good, but this is the hazardous waste pickup that started in June of 2012 as well, and it's based on items picked up per month. It started out very high, and I think that is because when we introduced the program and all of the recycle bins were delivered to every residence, every residential household, there was also a hazardous waste flyer in those bins. And I think when that program started was why you see that it was very strong in the beginning and has kind of slowly waned down to it is now. But I spoke to some Waste Pro representatives, and we are going to work together, we're going to try to promote the program. We think it's just a matter of promoting and training because we know hazardous waste isn't going away. So we're very positive about where that's going to head. And with that, if there isn't any questions, I'd like to go ahead and hand out the rewards to our residents. None? Okay. Every quarter, what, how this works is for every resident that recycles at least once a month, they are thrown into the proverbial technological hat, and each quarter, Waste Pro, they will, they draw five names out of a hat, and these were our quarterly winners for the fourth quarter of last year. And what I'd like to do is, when I call your name, if you could come up and accept your award, and we're going to have a picture taken when we're done. Ralph Assion.
Hi, Diane.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go. You want to step right over here and we'll get a picture of you. Darla Beck.
Hi, Diane.
Mary Anne Filippi. By the way, these are $50 gift certificates to a restaurant, so. There you go. And Alice Fusco. All right, let's come over here and.
I'll have you guys stand over here so we can get a feel behind you.
What happened to Donald?
Only guy.
All right, stand together.
Go together?
Yes, go together. All right, I'm going to take a couple, and I will count. One, two, three. There you go. One, two, three. There you go. Thank you very much.
Get back in the line.
Myeloma Awareness Month. Receiving the proclamation.
Whereas multiple myeloma, or myeloma, the second most common blood cancer worldwide is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow. It is called multiple because the cancer can occur at multiple sites. And whereas multiple myeloma currently affects more than 100,000 people in the United States with an estimated 20,000 cases diagnosed each year and 10,000 losing their battle each year. And whereas, once a disease of the elderly, it is now being found in increasing numbers in people under 65. And whereas, because myeloma is a rare disease, there can be delayed diagnoses, leading to delayed treatment. For this reason, an increased awareness of myeloma for clinicians and the general public will lead to earlier diagnosis, allowing people to live longer. And whereas, continued investment and innovation is critical to achieve early diagnosis and implement the most effective and safest treatments for myeloma patients. And whereas, although we have seen important advances in the last decade, there is still no cure for myeloma. And whereas, the city of Palm Coast is committed to increasing awareness of myeloma and encouraging private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs, now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of March 2014 be officially designated as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month in the city of Palm Coast. Signed this 4th day of March 2014, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Again, I want to thank Mayor Nets.
Pull the microphone down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, I want to thank Mayor Nets and for everyone's support of this proclamation. Just so you know is that Tom Brokoff was just diagnosed with this. It's a devastating disease, there is no cure right now. The symptoms are bone pain, anemia, kidney issues, frequent infection, and extreme fatigue. So almost anyone could say yes to some of those. I recently got a chance and was asked to speak in New Orleans at ASH, the American Society of Hematology. I was so proud to mention my town, my city, Palm Coast, Florida, as a supporter of this proclamation. I also, it's only through awareness and early diagnosis that this incurable cancer will be something that will be in the past. We won't have to worry about it every day. There are so many things going on right now through the research, and that's why it's so important for people to get early diagnosis for it. The earlier the better because it is a devastating cancer, and it might be as simple as anemia. So again, I really appreciate it. And the only other thing I'd like to know is, I'd like to mention is, good news is that we also have our own Multiple Myeloma Support Group, and it's led by Arnie Levine, and it meets the 2nd Tuesday of the month, 3:30 to 4:30, at the Florida Hospital, Flagler, Classroom D. And again, I appreciate everything you have done. And I'm still here, so that's good. Thank you so much.
To you and Arnie and all your colleagues, thank you for your support. I agree, we look forward to the day when this becomes a piece of history. Agenda item number four, second reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map relating to Island Walk Shopping Center containing 28-plus or minus acres. Mr. Reichman.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. It amends the official zoning map for parcel ID numbers 41, 11, 31, 49, 75, 50, 00, 10, 41, 11, 31, 49, 75, 50, 00, 20, 41, 11, 31, 49, 75, 50, 00, 40. Public records are Flagler County containing 28.69 acres, more or less, known as the Palm Harbor Shopping Center. And this is amending the Land Development Code zoning from general commercial or COM2 to master planned development zoning district or MPD. This ordinance provides for conflict severability and for an effective date. Mr. Mayor, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so if there's been any ex parte communications that any of the council, anyone on the council's had since the first reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
Councilmembers, any ex parte communications since the first reading of this ordinance?
No.
Received a couple emails, but I will make my decision from the information in here tonight.
Same.
I too received one or two emails in support. One with some questions about traffic with regard to Florida Park Drive, and then general middle-of-the-isle questions about when's it going to start. My decision will be based on the information brought forth in tonight's hearing. That being said, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is the second reading of this ordinance, the final reading. And as I stated at the first reading, this is a very exciting, very important project in Palm Coast. There's nothing worse than having your major, in this case, original shopping center go in the wrong direction, decline, and then possibly even go dark, and we have the opportunity to see this shopping center turn around. And because it is a second reading, we normally don't do the full presentation again, but as important as this project is and the interest in this project, Bo is going to make a presentation a little shorter than, and not quite as many of the details as he did the first time, but Bo, if you'll take it from here and highlight this project, please.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Bo Fauquay, Senior Planner, here tonight to present Island Walk, the rezoning request, application 2648. As Mr. Landon stated, I'll shorten the presentation just to give an overview in case there are folks in the audience that may have not heard about the project, and will of course be available for questions. Except for the economic development analysis, I have no information, new information to present tonight, but the applicant may, following this presentation. Once again, for everyone's clarification tonight, as far as development review in Florida and especially City of Palm Coast, we are at the zoning stage this evening. The city does have a comprehensive plan which designates the future land uses, which designate the general land use and general intensity and density of development. We're at the zoning stage tonight, which has to be consistent with the future land use and sets forward specific uses, intensity and density, and general development standards. While you will see some additional detail that you wouldn't normally see in a zoning request tonight, of course, there's subsequent stages that further specify the specific development standards through the site plan process, and of course, the vertical development and horizontal development through development and building permits. But tonight, we are at the rezoning stage. The rezoning request is to rezone 28.69 acres, commonly known as the Palm Harbor Shopping Center, from general commercial to to master planned development, subject to specific conditions contained in the master development plan agreement. The picture on the right, it was courtesy of the historical site, but taken in 1979, and as you'll see, the shopping center hasn't changed much since its initial development with ITT. The rezoning request encompasses three parcels today, this parcel here, this one here, and the main shopping center parcel. It excludes two parcels under separate ownership, this parcel and this parcel, commonly known as the bank and the medical office here. Future land use and zoning maps. The future land use, which is part of the comprehensive plan, is designated as mixed use, surrounding areas also mixed use. The current zoning is commercial to designation, and the request is to rezone to master planned development. The zoning was, took place in 2004 as part of the rezoning, citywide rezoning to this COM2 designation. As far as the specific intensities and densities, this chart compares the existing condition that the shopping center currently is, along with what's allowed under its current zoning, which is commercial to, and then what's going to be allowed under the proposed master planned development. Once again, it is a shopping center, and it will continue to be a shopping center. Those shopping center uses are generally consistent with commercial to. The proposed master planned development allows those uses under commercial to with some exclusions, such as tattoo shops and certain things the developer want to exclude from this development. As far as square feet, the current condition is 175,000 square feet of shopping center uses. The existing commercial to allows up to 500,000 square feet. The proposed master planned development allows up to 233,000 square feet of development, which is an increase of around 58,000. Impervious surface currently, over the whole three parcels, one of which is undeveloped, it's at 61%. If you look just at the developed area, it's 78% where the shopping center is currently developed. Existing COM2 allows 70%, the proposed MPD would allow an increase to 76%. Flurry ratio, existing condition is .14, the COM2 zoning allows .4. The maximum allowed under the proposed zoning today is .025. Slight increase for parking spaces to accommodate the 58,000 square feet of additional retail space. This is the proposed conceptual plan, that's part of the master planned development agreement. For clarity, hopefully, I'll just overlay it to show you what's going to change as part of the allowed under the master planned development. The main concern with this developer is to accommodate Publix's new prototype store, so Publix will be moving from its current location to its new location. If there's questions regarding timing, that would probably be better directed towards the applicant. Existing shopping center will get eventually redone. We have a Westford expansion of the new retail space. This building will go away and turn into parking. You'll have a new out parcel here, here, and here. Once again, conceptual elevation of the architecture that is consistent with our Land Development Code as Florida vernacular. Findings, city staff find that the application for the rezoning meets the master planned development and meets the requirements set forth in the Land Development Code, as previously stated, a part of the record during the first reading. City staff recommend approval of this project. Redevelopment of this property is consistent with public policy set forth in the comprehensive plan, prosperity 2021, the city's economic development plan, and the neighborhood plan for the Parkway East area. The center has served as the main commercial hub for this neighborhood, and without the reinvestment contemplated as part of this master planned development agreement would most likely go dark and could have a significant detriment on both the neighborhood and the city as a whole. The rezoning allows for redevelopment of the site in a timely fashion to ensure that the main anchor tenant, Publix, stays in the center, improves certain negative conditions, circulation, parking, building facades, and is consistent with our tree preservation and protection standards for our community. The development order conditions ensure that subsequent applications, such as the site plan, site and building permits, meet our COM plan and our Land Development Code and further the vision for our neighborhood and our community. And with that, that concludes my presentation. The applicant may have additional information to add.
Does the applicant wish to add?
Good evening, Council, Mayor Nets. My name is Michael Shmento, Shmento-Salzhuar. We represent the applicant. And it has been about a year since we started this process with the city, and we're ready to go. Within a couple weeks, we'll be closing on the property, and hopefully within about 60 days, we'll start to be able to turn some dirt out there. We appreciate the hospitality you granted us last time by giving us an extension or a continuance until today. And during the last meeting, since the last meeting we had, we did provide an economic analysis, or I should say, staff did it, and we had approved it. And Bo, you can present that at the appropriate time. One I wanted to just draw to your attention for the public purpose, again, this has been a year-long process, and as you know, as part of the code, there's a lot to do here. And I think it was in October, per the code, Section 2.05, we held a neighborhood meeting. We rented a large room over at Daytona Beach State College, and we sent out the notices to 300 adjacent property owners. And at that meeting, we had pretty good turnout, and we had about 50, maybe 60 people. And at that time, the applicant did a presentation as to what the site plan was going to look like, what the proposal was going to look like, and all those have been incorporated into the MPD agreement. At that meeting, we heard the public loud and clear, the, I should say, the developer and staff anticipated many of the items that would be of concern to the community. And if we could just go back to the site plan real quick, Bo. Obviously, at that town hall meeting where we had, you know, had given notice to everybody, the number-one concern obviously was the trees, and what are we doing with the trees? And as a result of that, although it's not required of the MPD process, the developer and staff actually went out and identified every single tree on the site. If you recall, some time ago, there was conjecture or speculation that there were ribbons on the trees and that they may come down. That wasn't quite accurate, that was all just the surveyors marking which trees they were, identifying them. And so we have identified every tree, not required of the MPD or the city code. We've retained an arborist, Mr. Lippi, and he's worked directly with your staff, and they've gone out, and I think they would represent to you today that they've identified and looked at every tree, determining whether they were healthy or not. And as a result of that, part of the MPD plan that you have in front of you is we've already agreed to with staff and the experts to a tree mitigation plan. So every tree that will be affected, every tree that will be protected, every tree that is dying has been identified, and if a tree is taken, it's all part of the plan. And I would tell you today that we exceed, under the MPD requirement, we exceed the standard Land Development Code. The staff can talk more about that. The other issue that we heard loud and clear from the community was how we are handling the adjacency to Arbortrace, the condominium development directly to the north. And what we heard from the residents was, we want to make sure that there's no light intrusion onto the property, and we've agreed to photometric requirements in the MPD. We've added additional landscaping along that edge, and we've done some beautification along there. We're limiting the access to the rear of the shopping plaza so that if you go out there currently, uses a lot of cut-through traffic from Florida Park Drive through to Harbor Center Drive and Old Kings Road. So we're doing, taking steps to minimize that. I mean, obviously, we can't stop everybody, but we'll make it more difficult. And then lastly, we're redoing the connection between Arbortrace and the shopping center, which is right behind the medical building that you see that will stand. One of the things that we heard was with traffic and trucks going, there was pedestrian safety issues. So not only have we done a large beautification, improvements to that area, we've limited access, we've improved the light intrusion that might occur, as some people have concerns about, and we've improved the pedestrian access to the shopping plaza so that those residents can have easy access. The other issue that we heard was traffic, particularly with the Florida Park Drive issue that we heard last time. And as a result of that, staff and the applicant agreed to go through, I think it was approximately three iterations of the traffic study. Let's look at this, let's look at this, let's look at this, let's tweak this, how does this happen? And so as a result of it, there is no adverse effect on the existing roadways out there. There is traffic issues, we heard loud and clear that on Florida Park Drive. You know, I would submit to you that they are the result of the original design, they are not a result of this plaza, and the additional traffic that may be generated from this plaza do not have an adverse effect on the neighborhoods to the north, according to traffic studies. What we've done to alleviate whatever traffic issues there are there today is we've agreed to put in a left-hand turn lane into the shopping plaza off of Florida Park Drive so that if someone wants to turn left into the parking or into the plaza, it's not going to block the traffic that wants to head north on the Florida Park Drive. So those people that are trying to get to their home will, it's intended to minimize their impact. So we've done that, we've worked with staff on the ingress egress on Palm Coast Parkway. As a result of the six-laning, we've agreed that when the city wants to make that change, that we will agree to have right turnout only and minimize the traffic conflicts on the bifurcated highway, highway, bifurcated roadway of Palm Coast Parkway by Walgreens. So we've taken a lot of steps to address the community's concerns. Mr. Collard has done 30, 40 Publix developments around this state, he's been in business for 30 years, so he understands the realities of coming in and doing a redevelopment project in the middle of an existing community. So those are some of the important things that we've put forth today. You know, for the record, we want to make sure that our record is established. Staff, through their expert opinions, have identified that this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that has been analyzed, it was approved by the planning board also, who sits in that position for you all today to make the recommendations. So the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, you know, issues of inconsistency, maybe someone might allege a spot zoning or something like that, that's just not going to happen because, again, we're in compliance with the law. The other thing that I want to tell you is that, you know, the zoning, there's been some questions about zoning. This is a commercial plaza, zoned, has been zoned for probably 30 years, and I think as a matter of right, under the city's current Land Development Code, an applicant could put up to almost 400,000 square feet of commercial retail space on this. Not getting any rezoning, only coming back to you for a site plan approval. And so this project, although it adds about 50,000 square And so this project, although it adds about 50,000 square feet extra, mostly, you know, not mostly, but a great majority of that in the buildings up front, the two out parcels along Palm Coast Parkway, and the finalization of the development along the tomato stand area, as we call it, that's where the additional development comes, and that's all been accounted for. So again, at the end of the day, we're well underneath the thresholds that are required under your land development code for density, intensity. Traffic is fine. The tree mitigation plan is finalized, so you all know exactly what trees will come out, won't come out. And in addition to that, we've agreed to some pretty hefty construction mitigation techniques to save and preserve the existing trees on there. So I'll sit down, I'll answer any questions that you may have, and Bo can present to you the economic issue that you wanted to have addressed, Mr. Nets.
Bo, do you want to do that presentation now?
Sure. It was included in the agenda packet. Let me pull it up here. Once again, this was a very basic analysis conducted by me. There is software and things you can buy to generate multiplier effects of what a project will generate, but based on just alone, the increase in the taxable value from the renovation and new construction, and also the sales tax, that is a local option sales tax, so this is an impact to the county as a whole and not just in our city of Palm Coast, was about $13 million over three years in increase in property tax revenues and increase in the local option sales tax. This was, I went over this with Chris Quinn, our finance director, to make sure my numbers were correct, and he quickly pointed out that, of course, this doesn't include state revenue sharing and other taxes like that, but this was just to give a kind of basic impact of what we will look at from an economic development perspective of a redevelopment for a local area. But of course, you know, there's multiplier, and there's things like salaries and wages and increase that you would look at if you had a software package to do the analysis. But just a very basic analysis would be about $13 million impact in local taxes alone.
That's the end of your presentation. Counsel, question is for either staff or for the applicant. Mr. Ferguson.
I realize, Bo, that you don't have the software package, but I'm just trying to get a feeling for how much more, there's going to be a much greater economic impact than $13 million over the timeframe you've pointed out. Is there some other rough figure? Maybe the applicant has some knowledge with the developer in terms of jobs and the multiplier effect that you've talked about.
Applicants indicating one moment. Of course, you have a new 58,000, I'll just talk conceptually because I won't be able to give you exact number, but you have 58,000 square feet of additional retail space, which obviously we have some employment factors along with, hopefully, the vacant square footage being occupied. So that's one area I know you can see dramatic effect is the employment increase. Michael, I'm not sure.
I do. I do have that information.
Your Honor.
To answer your question, Ms. Ferguson, or just to supplement some additional information, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Your Honor, let the record show that I misspoke. I have received some emails relative to ex parte communication.
Okay. Let the record show that. Go ahead.
This was provided to us today in response to staff asking for some additional questions. Based upon, again, Mr. Collard's experience and Publix's experience, that a plaza of this size, and again, I don't want to represent as what there is today because I don't know what the delta would be, but a plaza of this size typically generates 162 temporary construction jobs. How many are local, I don't know. It will generate, a fully leased plaza will generate about 152 jobs. The increased sales per annum, I shouldn't say increase, the total revenue generated from this plaza based upon square footage and historical averages is about $31 million a year, and the out of that, sales tax generated at about $2.1 million. And I don't know what your revenue sharing is on sales tax, but those are based off of, you know, rough-scale industry standards, if that helps or just gives any information to you.
Mr. DeLorenzo.
In the development order, section 8.12, there's a part about resource protection states that the applicant shall provide the city with a cultural resources assessment at the time of assuming all the site plan. What type of an assessment is that? Can you expand on that a little bit, Bo or someone?
Typically, what that is, they'll get a certified cultural resource expert, who's certified to do the work. And for the raw land that's never been surveyed, they will go there and they'll look at soils to make sure that there's no, you know, cultural resources there. And it's typical for us during the site plan process to require that on raw land.
So that'd be like artifacts?
Right, artifacts, these types of things.
If I may, Mr. Tyner, we've had, the city council had requests, several requests, from members of the local historical society, the county historical society. They share this concern that where there is raw land, there may be, and they would like to be consulted if something is found, let them take a look at it, because our goal is to preserve much of our pre-ITT history as we possibly can. So if you would convey that to Mr. Shmento, the developer, they would appreciate it, and I'm sure counsel would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Shmento. Given the fact that there will be some trees that will have to be taken out in order for this development to be completed, is there any idea on how the city will recapture or capture those trees?
Capture, recapture those trees? I'll speak generally as to your tree ordinance, as you know, and have been accused of having a very stringent tree ordinance here. And it takes some time, many, many years, in fact, to truly understand it, and we rely on Bill Butler. Andy Dance helped us because he helped write the code and the arborist. But generally speaking, trees that are removed are removed because they cannot be designed around or that they are unhealthy. And at the end of the day, you have to preserve a certain percentage of your trees based upon acreage and the number of trees. And there's a formula, maybe Bo can further elaborate. And if you exceed that, you have to do a tree replacement program. And I'll make up an example. If you took out a 12-inch or an 18-inch oak, you have to replace it with three or four trees of caliper that are smaller. So if you, the city's position is if you take out a really nice tree, you have to replace it with three or four more. So the intent is stay away from as many trees as you can design around it. We have, again, looked at every single tree with your staff, an independent arborist, and our staff, and we've identified every good, healthy tree, every sick tree, and every tree that will remain on site. And I said last time, there was an example in the northwest corner over by the old Staples Center, there's an extremely large double oak tree in that area. And, you know, we had a 15-minute discussion about that particular tree, and so we've agreed to do hand grubbing around it, removal of this, building wells around them if necessary, doing extra protection, and having staff come out and inspect those trees when they are impacted or removing the earth and around it. So it's been, that probably was the longest lead item that we had to go through with staff is, it just took a lot of time. It took a lot of time, a lot of back and forth. So every tree has been identified, and again, if we remove it, there's a part in your code that we're complying with. And if you want more details about which trees they are, you can look at your tree mitigation plan.
Mr. Lewis, just to add, as Mr. Faugu was doing a presentation, you typically would not see that type of detail within a rezoning application, but it was so important to us and staff and going out and putting boots on the ground and identifying all the trees and having that plan incorporated with this agreement. So when that site plan comes in, we're going to be consistent with this agreement.
Thank you.
Are there other council questions? Hearing none at this point, let's open the meeting for the public. Anybody in the public wish to be heard on this item, please approach the podium, give us your name and your contribution to three minutes.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Will there be any disruptions in traffic? And if so, for the length, what length of time? Thank you.
We'll get you an answer. Although I think I know what the answer's going to be. Next speaker.
Thank you, Your Honor. City Council, my name is Attorney Joshua Knight. I just wanted to bring a point of order and note that because this has been noted as a quasi-judicial hearing and proceeding, then pursuant to such, we should be able to present evidence of our own question and cross-examine witnesses and review reports and studies that are, have been produced and are being supplied in accordance with this rezoning ordinance. And to my estimation, we haven't seen, and, you know, we're not anti-development, et cetera, but the problem exists that these studies and reports that my colleague Mike Shmento has alluded to, a lot of them still haven't been produced yet. And therefore, in my opinion, that flies in the face of due process, and I would encourage you all to reconsider voting on this today and not even consider this a second reading. In fact, this would be a first reading because there's still outstanding issues. You know, like I said, we have the right to call witnesses to review these studies. You know, he alleges that the trees are going to be protected, and it's not about the trees, it's about a lot of other things as well. For instance, the spot zoning issue. I have a definition of spot zoning right here. Spot zoning is the application of zoning to a specific parcel of land within a larger zoned area when the rezoning is usually at odds with the city's master plan and current zoning restrictions. The rezoning may be for the benefit of a particular owner and at odds with pre-existing adjacent property owners. The two out parcels that they addressed previously look like a prime example of spot zoning to me, and that's an issue that needs to be addressed and answered before any further action is taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dennis McDonald. I wanted to talk about one of the comments that Mr. Shmento put forth here tonight. He said that there was a neighborhood hearing meeting on the 18th of October, and in fact, there was, and I sent you all an email on this. And what we have learned by looking at the applications that are right online with the city, the first application, 2611, was filed September 17th, and it was withdrawn October 17th. So in other words, councilman, the day they had the hearing, there was no application on file in the city hall. So, you know, what exactly are we having? We're having a hearing for no application? The more interesting point is that application indicated that it was 58,538 square foot of increase, but it also indicates that it was only two lots. Now, when we, two months later, almost two months later, we have a new filing for this project right here, or this zone change, which would be application 2648. That one was filed on December 9th. So two months later, you now get an application for a hearing that, a neighborhood hearing that you're having for, for, the application didn't exist, and it's a completely different application. In other words, one had three lots of property, one had two. So we're doing this. We're having sleight of hand here. So to start the process off, you don't even have a neighborhood hearing that's been completed on this particular, you know, application for a rezoning. The master controlling site plan that you originally noticed the public on is not the same as a rezoning for master plan of development. There clearly is spot zoning, or what's known in Florida as contract zoning, here. On this map, if we could have the map put up, I'd like to point something out. Okay, now, we're looking at this map here. Now, to any of us and to all, I was just sitting back in the audience, I know didn't have a great shot at it, but show me, what we've got here is, you're saying that this 28.69 acres is going to be rezoned for master plan of development, but show me on this map where it indicates two little Luxembourg-type properties that are commed too. They remain commed too. This is one of the big issues here that's not being considered by the planning department that I've heard absolutely nothing about, ADA, Americans with Disability Act. This is a very, very strong lobby, and this is going to come into play here. You've got no ADA, you can't meet your ADA requirement the way this thing is right now. It's not even remotely possible, and it hasn't even been discussed.
15 seconds.
Okay. I also would like to mention that in a quasi-judicial arrangement, there is no limitation of time, so all this, it may very well be subject to appeal. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I keep hearing that Florida Park.
Your name, please, sir.
My name is Steve Carr. I live on Florida Park Drive. And I keep hearing that Florida Park Drive is being used as it was originally designed, and it was originally designed as a residential area. But right now, it is really being used as a commercial corridor between two parkways. We have so much commercial traffic traveling between up and down Florida Park Drive, day and night, and it's just creates a lot of noise and disturbs you all during the day and all during the night. So please take a look at that and see if you can find some way to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker. So no approach to the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back. First issue is disruption of traffic. I can almost guarantee it, if and other, no other reason than rubbernecking, but our traffic, city traffic engineer will be looking at this issue, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Is there any anticipation? What about the juxtaposition of this redevelopment and the six-laning of Palm Coast Parkway?
Well, first, the traffic engineer during this process, again, not very common with a master plan development rezoning, there was a traffic study conducted that showed that the level of service, the impacts from this proposed development, that the level of service on Florida Park Drive will remain the same level of service that it has now, will be maintained at level of service. As far as traffic flow, we're widening Palm Coast Parkway. As far as internal traffic flow, when the applicant comes in for a site plan, this will be a phased project. So those details about circulation, internal circulation within development will be determined at the time of site plan to make sure that things flow adequately as the project develops.
Mayor, if I may add, this project should be happening in the next two years. During that same two years, the city is rehabbing Palm Coast Parkway to six lanes. So those two projects should dovetail, but most of the traffic impacts is going to be with the six-laning and not this project. So hopefully, this project won't have major impact compared with the six-laning does.
Okay. Now for the city attorney. Attorney Knight made certain representations, allegations about the process. Would you care to comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is a quasi-judicial matter, and the courts have provided some guidance for local permits, including the city of Palm Coast, and how these matters are to be done. The first thing to start with is that this is not a judicial proceeding, it's a quasi-judicial proceeding. So the Fifth District Court of Appeal in 2010 specifically recognized that there is a distinction between the formality and all of the protections that are afforded to parties in the judicial process when you go before a court. The Fifth ECA, which is the District Court of Appeal, that specifically rules on matters involving Flatiron County, specifically ruled that that level of due process protection is not afforded within a quasi-judicial proceeding. Further made a distinction between parties and participants. Parties like the city and the applicant have a higher standard, have a higher level of protections under due process. A participant, and in that case, the, in that case before the Fifth ECA, it was Carillion Community Homeowners Association versus Seminole County. The Fifth ECA specifically ruled that neighboring property owners or homeowners associations were not parties, they were participants. And the specific ruling in that case was that they did not have And the specific ruling in that case was that they did not have the right to cross-examine any witnesses. They said that if every participant had the opportunity to make the demands that you would normally have the right to do in a lawsuit, then it would be an overly burdensome and cumbersome process that would just be unworkable for local governments. So as to the right to cross-examine, that is something that would be afforded, that is afforded under Florida law to the parties, but not to participants. The next issue was right to call witnesses, certainly, any party has, any, a party or participant has the right to bring someone up and make presentation to this council and ask questions. And that certainly is what you're doing now, Mr. Mayor, and we've always done it. If you have questions about it, while you may not want, while there is no obligation for the city to specifically allow a question from an attorney or from other participant to a witness or to another party or a participant, what we do is we go beyond that. The city of Palm Coast allows every participant to come forward, ask questions, and when that process is done, those questions are answered. So, for that part of due process, we accord that, and the city of Palm Coast does that in quasi-judicial matters. As to spot zoning, it's very clear that, and this was something that Mr. Knight indicated, he read his definition of spot zoning, and it says, "When it's at odds with the comprehensive plan, then that's the first test, the first threshold test to determine whether it's spot zoning." Well, you have a finding, a specific factual and legal determination made by your land-planning agency, your PLDRB, as well as concluding by staff that this particular application is consistent with your comprehensive plan, and therefore, as a matter of law, cannot be spot zoning. So from a standpoint of procedural due process, this process that's required by Florida law, the city of Palm Coast has met those requirements.
Thank you. I might add, for the record, that Mr. McDonald had communicated to me with my email requesting the right to cross-examine witnesses, and I pointed out in my response that as a member of the public, he would be entitled to the same three minutes as everyone else. However, if he had questions that could not be adequately expressed in three minutes, he was welcome to submit them in writing, either to the city clerk, to any member of this council, or to me, and that we would endeavor to have them answered. Then there's the question Mr. McDonald raised about the, for want of a better word, the adequacy of the public meeting, that it was held on a date when there was no application on file. How does that affect this process and these proceedings?
I'll have to defer to staff on that. I don't have a factual background really to be able to address that.
Yeah, it is a code requirement, it's not a state requirement, and this is something that we implemented back in 2008. And the intent of the neighborhood meetings is, before you have a public hearing, and even before the PLDRB, to get that public input, what other concerns of the citizens. And as I think illustrated during the presentation, we've heard a lot of those kind of concerns, you know, with the trees, with the buffer to Harbor Trace. Those are the type of concerns that were brought up at the neighborhood meeting. And sometimes, an application's not even filed. Sometimes the applicant, it's an applicant meeting, it's not city staff. We don't run the meeting, sometimes we'll be there and observe. But sometimes, an application not even submitted. The land development code provides that the land use administrator, me acting as the planning manager, may waive the requirement for a neighborhood meeting if the project is part of a multi-phase project for which meetings have already previously been held. And this is a multi-purpose project, it's a multi-phase project. I think the information from the neighborhood was useful, and we incorporated that information into the master plan development that you're hearing today.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. McDonald alleges that there is no way that this project can comply with the American with Disabilities Act. I don't know how you could say that when there's no site plan, there's no building plan, but comments on that one?
Right, I mean, the, I mean, there are responsibilities both by the applicant and the city. Of course, new development in the city, we do review for ADA compliance when it comes to transportation, and of course, the building code has ADA, not just federal ADA, but state ADA requirements as well. So that all will be reviewed as we move down the development process.
I went, not just reviewed, but complied with.
Absolutely. There could, I suppose, be an issue with existing buildings that will not be removed, renovated, rehabilitated. They may or may not comply with ADA, and there are guidelines for bringing things up to standards. In fact, that's an issue that we're facing with this very building. This building does not in any shape, form, or description comply with ADA, and we will be addressing that over time. The last issue that was raised, the issue of commercial traffic on Florida Park Drive, this is an ongoing issue, I'm very much aware of it since I live directly off Florida Park Drive. I am hopeful that as we have begun the process for the four-laning of Old Kings Road, we will keep that in mind, and where possible, make plans for now and in the future to divert traffic to Old Kings Road, which will be four-laned. We may want to look and continue to look at traffic flow in this area, and I would encourage staff, the city traffic engineer, and the applicant to do whatever we can do to ensure that we're alleviating traffic problems wherever possible.
Mayor, and can I just add for the record in regards to the spot zoning issue, that this is something staff and I, we've all discussed regarding it. The one key element was pointed out by the city attorney, but just for the record, so it's on the record. This project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As I stated before, the comprehensive plan calls for neighborhood master plans, such as the Parkway East Master Plan, and economic development plans, such as Prosperity 2021. So this project is consistent with not only the comprehensive plan, but those further planning efforts that have been undertaken by the city related to the neighborhood and altogether economic development of the city. So it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff does not feel that this meets the definition of spot zoning as put forward by our planning profession at the American Planning Association.
Thank you. Back to council. Additional council questions, comments? Mr. Ferguson?
We're changing, or attempting through this ordinance, of changing the zoning from COM-2 to master plan development. So my question is, the out parcels, would they be permitted under COM-2? And would the exclusion-type businesses under master plan be allowable under COM-2?
The, if I understand the question correctly, the excluded, the master plan development allows all the uses allowed under COM-2 and excludes certain uses. So the out parcels that are along the roadway, yes, they could apply for a site plan under COM-2 and develop, and then also develop those uses that are allowed under COM-2 but would not be allowed under MPD. But those parcels are a part of this plan, so it would be the COM-2 uses minus those excluded uses.
But I think Mr. Ferguson is alluding to the existing parcels, the bank parcel, the medical office parcel, those are existing COM-2, they will remain COM-2, so they could use, they could house the full gamut of COM-2. Is that correct? Thank you. Mr. Dillarrenzo, anything else? Mr. Lewis, anything? Mr. Waller? Okay. Since there are no additional questions, is there a motion?
I'd like to move that the approved ordinance, 2014 XX relating to the rezoning of Allen Walk, formerly known as Palm Harbor Shopping Center, to the MPD.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Dillarrenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor, next.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. This brings us to Agenda Item Number Five, the first reading of an ordinance, comprehensive plan amendment for subject properties, better known as Grand Landings. Mr. Reichman.
Mr. Mayor, Council. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, order providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast, 2035 comprehensive plan as previously amended pursuant to Section 163.3187 Florida statutes. Amendment to future land use map for flume designation for 774.4 acres, more or less, of certain real property from residential, low-density rural estate for Flagler County future land use designation, and commercial, low-intensity Flagler County future land use designation to residential and mixed-use, which is the City of Palm Coast future land use designation. It is described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance subject. The subject property, better known as Grand Landings, including a note on the future land use map to limiting the lands designated as residential to 749 residential units, and a note limiting non-residential use in the mixed-use area to 150,000 square feet, providing for conflicts, ratification of projects, codification, severability, and effective date. This is a legislative matter, not quasi-judicial, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, it's actually kind of nice to see some of the projects that went dark, if you will, come back to life, and this is one of those. So, Jose is going to highlight this project. I thought I got your name wrong in the way you did that.
Vote two.
Yeah, not that I've done that before or anything. Jose, please take your time.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. For the record, Jose Papa of the City of Palm Coast. For this item, we do have just one presentation for typically when you have a comprehensive plan amendment and a companion zoning map amendment. So staff will provide one presentation for both items, which are city-initiated. The subject property is approximately 774 acres, which was annexed into the city in 2007. And what you have is a...
What you have is a pointer that won't point.
But I will use the arrow. We have Seminole Woods Parkway, Citation Boulevard is here, and this is approximately two miles south of State Road 100. And again, this is an approximately 774-acre parcel, which was annexed into the city in 2007. Currently, it has the Flagler County future land use map designations, as well as the Flagler County zoning designations. What we have here is about 749 acres of area that is designated for residential uses and about 25 acres for commercial area.
Jose, where's the airport?
The airport is, the airport property is, it's off the map, the landing strip, and I believe that might just be the tip of one of the landing strips, but certainly, it's to the northwest of the subject parcel.
If I can add, to an abandoned landing strip, they go the other way at this point.
And again, what these, this is a housekeeping item, and what these applications will do is that there are no changes with the permitted uses and amenities as provided for in these applications. What's been approved for entitlements under the, by the Flagler County Board of County Commission is about 749 residential units, both attached and detached, and 150,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial, as well as an amenity center. And as part of that original approval by the county commission, 14 acres of parkland was dedicated, and that parkland is here in the southeast corner of this parcel. The first application is simply a future land use map amendment, and as part of that future land use map amendment, there will be some notes that will be added to the comprehensive plan map in order to limit the potential development that's found within the property known as Grand Landings. Again, the yellow area in stripes is the Flagler County designation of residential. This pink area is about 25 acres, and that's the county designation of commercial low-intensity. The proposed amendment is to essentially change what was Flagler County low-density residential to residential city designation. And again, and here with the commercial low-intensity area, that's proposed to be changed to mixed-use city designation, and as you can see, there's been some reconfiguration of that mixed-use, of the proposed mixed-use area in comparison to the original designated commercial area. And that's mainly due to better data that's available. The wetland lines, as you know this, the original lines were a little more straight, the new lines are a little more jagged, again, taking out the wetland areas, accounting for that. The other change in the shape of that mixed-use area is that previously, under previous approval, you have the amenity center, which was going in this residential area close to the entrance to the site. In reworking the, tweaking the site plan, that amenity area, which is to serve the residents of Grand Landings, has been moved towards the center of the neighborhood, mainly around the circle here, and that opened up some area there that can now be used for, is now included as part of the mixed-use area. The two footnotes that we want to add to the comprehensive plan map, one is that merely, that within the residential areas, the yellow areas within this development, that would be limited to 749 units of residential, 749 residential units, which is consistent with the entitlements that it has now. The other change would be, the other footnote would be that in the mixed-use area, that's the non-residential uses that can be permitted within this red area would be limited to 150,000 square feet. I will make a note, though, that as part of our mixed-use designation also allows residential uses, and it allows residential uses to the tune of 15 units per acre. So that option will always be open to the owner at a future time to maybe come in at a later time, giving them flexibility to maybe change some of the non-residential uses to residential uses. So that option remains open for the developer. But in terms of limiting commercial uses on that site, it is to be consistent with what's permitted right now, with what's entitled right now under its Flagler County designation. So I went over the footnotes that are to be included in the flume. Again, the adjustments to the mixed-use area, again, based on moving the amenity center towards the center of the neighborhood, better drawing of the wetland lines. The net result is there's approximately two additional acres of mixed-use areas when you added and took out some of the wetland areas from that mixed-use area. And again, mixed-use permits residential use of up to 15 units per acre.
Excuse me, Jose?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back?
Sure.
Okay. If in the future, they decided to do multifamily in the mixed-use area, that would, that would, their maximum residential is still 749, or is that a new number?
No, it'll be a new number. The 749 is what limits the residential-
In the yellow part?
In the yellow part. Yes, sir. And we put that limit in there, really, it's just for purposes of doing the maximum net impact analysis, our residential land use category permits up to 12 units per acre. And so 12 units times 700, about 750 acres-
Is a lot more than 749?
It's a lot more than 749.
Right.
And so, if we had to do that analysis, then certainly, we would have shown an impact much greater than what is really anticipated on this site, and that's why we're proposing to provide that footnote on the future land use map, to say that really, the realistic cap on this property is really at 749 units within that residential area.
Okay, thank you.
In turn, the accompanying zoning map amendment, currently Flagler County designation of planned unit development, and again, that's just proposed to be changed to the city designation of master plan development, and along with that, of course, with, and here's the conceptual master plan, very similar to what was originally approved with the county. And the accompanying development agreement, again, there are no changes in the proposed entitlements, 749 dwelling units, single-family attached and detached, which was previously approved under county designation, limit of 150,000 square feet of commercial uses. The development agreement has been tweaked so that the language in the development agreement makes reference to the city's land development code as opposed to the Flagler County code. And other amendments in development agreement include the creation of Exhibit C, which is a table of uses for the non-residential area. It essentially takes into account what's permitted in our commercial two and commercial one districts, and just puts that in the table that's to be attached to the development agreement. agreement. Continue to clarify that silvicultural activities may continue on the subject property, since this is a phased project and will not be developed all at one time. So in those areas where they're permitted to do silvicultural activities, that activity may continue, and that's just to clarify that. Additional language would be cooperation between the city and the community or the property owners on education to reduce the potential for nuisance occurrences of black bears, essentially just an educational process that the county... That the city will take the lead with, in cooperation with the residents. Inclusion of wildfire mitigation activities, and finally, donation of right-of-way for potential extension of Citation Boulevard. Under the original proposal, or when it was approved with Flagler County, we sort of lost that opportunity to connect Bel Air Boulevard and Seminole Woods. Getting some additional right-of-way from the developer doesn't exactly lead us to the most optimal maybe alignment for the road, but it leaves open the opportunity to eventually connect those two roads with an east-west route. The findings are that with the flume amendment, again, it's internally consistent with the comprehensive plan. The analysis shows that there is no impact on the level of service for public service or infrastructure. And with the zoning map amendment development agreement, again, those two items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. As a result, staff is recommending, along with the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board, we're recommending approval of the proposed future land use map amendment, along with the footnotes, and also the approval of the proposed zoning map amendment, along with the development agreement.
Counsel questions. This is a presentation for Agenda Items Five and Six. Questions on either one, although we will take the two items separately. Counsel questions. Mr. DiLorenzo.
Jose, there was mention, and I don't remember in what part of it it is, of the parkland being... As part of the original proposal, the parkland being dedicated to the Board of County Commissioners. With annexation, did that parkland come to us? With this, did the parkland have... Do we... Is it our parkland?
It's not our parkland. Although the land came into the city, the deed did not transfer to the city. It's probably just something that we'll have to work with the county to eventually transfer ownership of that parkland.
Okay, thank you.
The counsel questions.
One quick question, because you mentioned earlier about a landing strip, and I think the city manager said that had been changed. How much... What sort of impact will the airport have on that development?
The extension... The expansion of the airport, it mainly takes it further... Some of the runways further north, if I believe.
Just... I'm not an expert, but the runways go east-west, and the expansions are east-west, and this is south. It's got a number... Because of the history of it, and it was, I believe, used by military at one time, had a number of runways that are no longer being used by the planes of today. So we have no reason to believe that the airport will have a significant impact on this, any more than... I mean, there's other residence... Residential areas in this section of town that you are well aware of, that are actually more in that fight pattern.
However, Mr. Lewis, I will... Within the development agreement, there is some language in there where the property owner is to notify potential buyers into the area of the presence of this airport in that location.
Forewarned is forearmed.
Yes.
Speaking of forewarned and forearmed, I hope the property owner understands the ramifications of neighborhood commercial adjacent to residential. It's an issue that the city is dealing with now. It's nice that the change allows other than commercial.
Yes.
Anyway. Here are another... One of the county council questions. Let's open the meeting to the public. The presentations on Agenda Items Five and Six, we will take them separately, but your comments are equally valid and welcome on both together, if you wish.
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to read the title to Agenda Item Number Six?
No, because we're going to do them separately. Anyone wish to be heard on Agenda Items Number Five? Or numbers... Please come up to the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. You're gonna... They're gonna put in 7,000, whatever it is, 700 units. Do they do a water study when they put up all these buildings? You know, if you look at the paper, it's... They're having a big discussion up in Tallahassee about water. Now, I was just wondering, how do we stand with all... With the additional residences?
We'll get you an answer. Good question. Next speaker.
I have been to these meetings.
Give us your name, please.
Janice Frank, Lehigh, Palm Coast.
Can you pull the microphone over toward you? There we go. Thank you.
Was this the community that was supposed to have hangars and access to the airport?
I believe so, yes.
Is that still what the concept is?
Mayor, that portion, that is not included in this, and I don't believe that has ever been approved by the county. There was that phase on... In this grand scheme of things, but that is not included in this proposal, correct, Jose?
That's correct.
Is that still in the perimeter or proximity to the airport?
That, to our knowledge, has... Is... If it's not dead, it's on a respirator and very likely won't come back to life, is the way I understand it.
Well, with a name like Grand Landings, it rang a bell, so...
Yes, but rightfully so, because it was originally all part of Grand Landings.
It's supposed to mimic Bruce Creek with hangars and private planes.
Yeah. The FAA, federal government, has real concerns about that kind of activity at an airport in today's compared to what we had in the past before 9/11, to tell you the truth.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker. Signon approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back. Mr. Landon, very good question. Cities' consumptive use permit, and how does that... How does that fit with future development? Is that something Mr. Adams needs to answer, or do you...
Actually, it's something that Jose actually evaluates with the input of our utility and, you know, our comprehensive plan. That's all part of that evaluation of all the resources, not just water and sewer, but streets and, you know, public services in general. So I would ask Jose to address how you've looked at that with the help of Richard Adams, if you need his help.
Sure. Yes, essentially, Mr. Landon has answered it. Part of any future land use map amendment is an analysis of that proposed change impact on public service and public infrastructure. As part of the analysis, it has to do with, again, based on the change that you might be requesting, do you have adequate water, sewer, parks, park facilities, stormwater, in order to meet your adopted level of service? And does it decrease that level of service below a level where you're not able to provide for the potential increase in density or intensity? Again, part of the reason why an analysis of 749 units is significantly different from an analysis of 749 acres times 12 acres, sometimes 12 units, which I cannot do in my head, probably about 8,400 units. So without that, again, let me just go to the very real example that without that footnote on the map, we are to assume that they can build up to 8,400, about 8,400 dwelling units on the site, and our analysis must show that our water, sewer, and all those other facilities can accommodate 8,400 additional dwelling units. If not, then we need to... You do one of two things. You can reduce the proposed impact, that is, reduce the number of dwelling units, or you show how you're going to make capital improvements, which needs to be included in your capital improvement plan, to accommodate that additional level of development. So it is analyzed.
Just a further kind of a general commentary for Mr. Carroll. Ultimately, it is the Water Management District that issues what are called consumptive use permits to local governments, and that tells you that's the maximum amount of water that you have available to you. Whether or not you've got the water plants, whether or not you've got the sewer plants, that's the maximum amount of water available to you. And so when you do this analysis, you have to be within that maximum amount. Now, what happens when you reach a residential and commercial intensity that equals your consumptive use permit? You apply for another consumptive use permit and get an expansion, extension, or you stop development. Everybody agrees that water tends to be, and will be, the limiting factor for growth in Florida. Back to City Council. Any additional questions on Agenda Item Number Five?
Move approval of Agenda Item Number Five, a comprehensive plan amendment for subject properties, better known as Grand Landings.
Move in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettis?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Agenda Item Number Six, an ordinance, zoning map amendment, and development agreement. Mr. Reichman.
Mr. Mayor, the council, this is the City Council. The City of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This is amending the zoning designation of approximately 774 acres, subject property better known as Grand Landings, from Plan Unit Development, or PUD, which is a Flagler County designation, to Master Plan Development, or MPD, which is the City of Palm Coast zoning designation. This is as particularly depicted and described in Exhibit A, and whose partial identification numbers are provided in Exhibit B. And approving a development agreement is provided in Exhibit C. This ordinance provides for severability, conflicts, non-codification, for an effective date, and, Mr. Mayor, this is a quasi-judicial hearing.
Quasi-judicial. Therefore, are there any ex parte communications with regard to Agenda Item Number Six?
No.
No.
None. We're still ending. Anything further?
We have nothing further to add.
Mr. Papa, anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay. Counsel questions on Agenda Item Number Six. Open the meeting to the public, aim for the public, wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Six, which is the second half of this package.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. With all these buildings going up and all this project and everything, how do we stand with our police department? And how do we stand with the fire department? Do we have to increase, decrease? Do we have to put up more buildings for them? You know, more fire stations? Something's gotta give, of course. We only got 122 police officers, so... And you're gonna put in 700 additional units, and that means that's, you know... The last time we brought this up, we were getting 6,000 people to one cop. Now it's gonna be 6,004 to one cop. Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker. Signon approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to counsel. Keep in mind that 749 additional units, if they get built, are 749 additional taxpayers, and that much more revenue is available for fire and police departments, so it ought to be something that we can deal with. Counsel comments, additional questions, comments, or a motion on Agenda Item Number Six?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettis?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Agenda Item Number Seven. Our Citizens Academy, we're almost there. Agenda Item Number Seven, an ordinance, a flume amendment for approximately 4.1 acres of city-owned land adjacent to Seminole Woods Parkway. Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council. The City of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 comprehensive plans previously amended pursuant to Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. This amends the future land use map or flume designation for 4.1, more or less, acres of certain real property from agriculture and timberlands, which is a Flagler County future land use designation, to institutional, which is the City of Palm Coast future land use designation. This is as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance. This ordinance provides for conflicts, ratification, par acts, codification, severability, and effective date. This is legislative, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
This is truly just a housekeeping item that Jose is trying to fill in the small pieces on the map, so Jose, take it from here.
Thank you, sir. Subject property is 4.1 acres, owned by the city, currently is used as a monitoring well, annexed in 2007 as part of the annexation of Grand Landings, and it is surrounded by property. If it looks... If the parcel looks or the location looks familiar, it's because it is surrounded by Grand Landings, which you just heard in that previous application. Again, typical with property that's annexed, it retains the Flagler County future land use map designation and zoning designation until such time that the city initiates the action items to change the flume and the zoning. Proposed change here would be from Flagler County agriculture and timberlands to city institutional, which is consistent with a lot of our publicly-owned properties and utilities that are within the city. As you can tell, here's a good example. The FPNL site, FPNL transmission lines that are adjacent to Seminole Woods, those lands have a designation of institutional. And so this utility site, it will also be tagged with the institutional future land use designation. For zoning, previous zoning was, it was within that Grand Landings PUD, or at least contained the PUD designation under Flagler County. We're just changing that to public semi-public, which is, again, consistent with how a lot of our utility uses in the city, such as our water treatment plants, and in some cases even our schools governmental uses. It's also consistent with public semi-public. The flume amendment and the zoning amendment, the flume amendment, again, internally consistent with the comprehensive plan. There's no impact on the level of service for public service or infrastructure, and the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with comprehensive plan. And again, there's no changes in potential uses on this property. Staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board are recommending approval of the future land use map amendment, as well as the zoning, proposed zoning map amendment.
Counsel questions.
What's a monitoring well?
What's a monitoring well?
My answer will be as good as utilities, but essentially, what I've been told is that it measures the level of... This is a saltwater monitoring well, so it measures the level of saltwater that's within our source of water within the city. So they take readings and are able to tell whether the level of salt is increasing or decreasing. It monitors.
One of the concerns of coastal communities is the more freshwater you pump out of the ground, the greater the chance of saltwater intrusion from the ocean. So a saltwater monitoring well is determining whether or not that's happening.
Thank you. No question, Mayor.
Mr. Ferguson.
Oftentimes, we're asked to review housekeeping amendments to zoning or whatever. I'm just wondering, on matters like this, I'm just trying to figure out what housekeeping lines and city council involvement. I mean, it seems like a formality that if I were a member of the Citizens Academy, I'd be sitting there scratching my head, why is this necessary?
Sure.
And it seems like a, you know, like taking out the trash. We don't need to tell you it's okay, you know?
To give you the perspective from... I'll give a technical answer from a planner's point of view of why housekeeping items are important and necessary. Our comprehensive plan has land use designations that gives you densities and intensities, and the importance of keeping those as accurate as possible is that in some ways, projections of what our future population will be, what the future transportation needs will be in the city, are sometimes determined based on what we have in our future land use map and on our zoning map. So whereas, an important one is something that this site, with an agriculture and timberlands designation from Flagler County, indicates that it could have up to a dwelling... Residential development potential of one unit per five acres. But is that ever really gonna happen? Well, the reality of it is that it's a monitoring well site and... Well, the reality of it is that it's a monitoring well site and probably will not ever, I would not say not ever, but the likelihood of it being developed for anything other than governmental use is unlikely. And so the accuracy really needs to be there because of the need to properly plan for the future and knowing what the true impacts are of your, of your future land use maps, the designations that are on it, and the categories. Again, I think a good example of that also was the previous application where, if we didn't put those footnotes, we need to be planning for 8,400 additional residential units that are gonna potentially access Seminole Woods Boulevard or in Seminole Woods Parkway. But the reality is, there's only gonna be 749 units. And so some of the accuracy needs to, again, plays an important role in planning for the future.
Spoken like a true planner. I enjoy.
Any other questions on Agenda Item Number Seven?
Sir?
Not well open to me and to the public, aim for the public, wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Seven, or we'll package it with Agenda Item Number Eight, just as we did with Five and Six. If you'd like to be heard on Agenda Items Seven or Eight, this is your opportunity. Signee on approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Additional questions or a motion on Agenda Item Number Seven?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Eight, the accompanying zoning map amendment. Mr. Reichman.
This is an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, which amends the zoning designation for approximately 4.1 acres, more or less, of certain real property from Plan Unit Development, which is PUD, the Flagler County designation, to Public Semi-Public, or PSP, the City of Palm Coast zoning designation. Described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance. This ordinance provides for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and effective date. Mr. Mayor, this is a quasi judicial hearing.
Are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed?
No.
Mr. Landon, anything additional?
Nothing additional.
Mr. Pop, anything additional?
Just one more house, I'm sorry. Just one housekeeping item. This is a, this particular item is a small scale amendment, less than 10, so it's less than 10 acres. And being less than 10 acres, it doesn't need to go up to, to the state agencies for review, like the previous, the grand landings amendment. So this one, we'll schedule for a second reading at the next available city council public hearing, public meeting.
Can't wait for that one.
Council questions? Open to me and to the public, aim for the public, wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Eight. Signee on approach the podium, close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Nine, presentation of certificates to graduating students, students of the City of Palm Coast Citizens Academy.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Lane, the Communications and Marketing Manager for the City of Palm Coast, and I'm very excited to present the 30th graduating class of our Citizens Academy program. Not sure how many we've done per year in the past, but we do three per year now, so it's been going on for a number of years. We had a great group this time, a little smaller than usual because of a couple of last minute medical things that kept people from participating. But they were a great group. We've spent the last five Monday evenings meeting each of the mayor and the council members, meeting each of the department directors, many of the city staff, visiting several city facilities. And I have presentation certificates to present, and then we'll do a group photo. And I'm wondering if the mayor will come up and help me.
I will.
And to the graduates, when you come up, we'll just have you stay here, and we'll form a couple of rows, and we'll do a group photo.
Leo?
All right. Anna Allen?
Congratulations.
Barbara Barahaus?
Need to change which one.
I hope I don't mangle the last names. I get to know everybody so well over the program, but the last names, not so much. Julia Brady?
Thank you.
John Brady?
Thank you.
Dora Campbell?
Thank you.
Sarah Carson?
Congratulations.
Belinda Coniff?
Congratulations.
Stacy Heineck?
Thank you for participating.
I think you guys are gonna have to back up a little bit. We're a small group, but not that small. John Hamilton?
Thank you.
Linda Huano?
Congratulations.
William Ilavsky?
Thank you.
Diana LeBrun?
Thank you.
Jane Leisinger?
Thank you.
Juan Carlos Mayorka?
Congratulations.
Mary McCrone?
Thank you.
It's Mary's birthday.
Happy birthday to Mary.
I gave up Kate for this.
Great way to celebrate her birthday. Karen Pio?
Now, I can tell you guys, there's no camera that's gonna take a picture of that Y.
She's not a double world.
It's a big problem. Shouldn't she?
Correction, Karen Pio. It's funny, I guess I should start calling everyone by their last name, that way I'll be better practiced by the end. Jasper Spears?
That should be part of the training, how to line up for the picture.
Dorothy Unch?
One roll, yeah.
Herman Unch?
Yeah.
And John Witt?
We ran our certificates about the time we ran out of room.
Right, council members, come on up, get in the back row.
All right, let's make sort of three rows. You have to act like you're...
Scrunch them.
Scrunch together, there's two.
Scrunching.
Yeah. All right, and then everybody needs to be able to see my face. You can't see my face?
Can't see.
All right, we're gonna do a few, so keep smiling. One, two, three. Lovely group. One, two, three. We'll do one with a flash, just in case. One, two, three. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Oops, sorry. Good, good. Cindy, that was class number, what, 27?
Thirty.
Thirty, wow. Time flies. Well, thank everyone for their participation. Oh, this brings us to the consent agenda items 10 through 14. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Nope.
If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mayor, we have somebody, and you need to allow the public to comment before...
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone who'd wish to comment on the consent agenda before we approve it?
Good evening, Councilman and Mayor Nettles. My name is Maureen Jones, and I represent Gus and Colleen Azram at 92108 Bulldog Drive. And I'm speaking to, in reference to Consent Agenda Number 13, which is referenced as item number, I believe it's 1464, resolution approving the Bulldog Drive right-of-way maintenance map. I wanted to bring to your attention that Bulldog Drive is currently a county road, known as County Road 401. It has never been transferred to the city. I have copies that I'd like to attach to the agenda and provide to you all of a interlocal agreement between Flagler County and the City of Palm Coast with a list of roads. And Bulldog Drive is not one of those roads that was ever transferred from the county. The reason why I am referencing this is because on your consent agenda item, you're looking at Florida Statute 95.361, and you're claiming that through maintenance, you are going to dedicate this to yourself, but it's a two-tiered statute that you must actually build the road and dedicate it, and the county has built the road, and the county has never transferred it to the city. So I am requesting, first of all, that you table that agenda until you get a transfer of that roadway from the county to the city before you can dedicate any maintenance right-of-way to yourselves. If you don't own it, you can't really claim that you built it. The next, also in reference to that item, you have additional right-of-way maintenance that you are trying to claim, and in front of, the right-of-way in front of, well, it's not technically right-of-way, but the land in front of 92 and 108 since 1996 and 1970, 1996 and 1997 has been controlled and maintained by Mr. Azram. As a matter of fact, at one point in time, he was requesting maintenance, and it was refused to him, and that he has always controlled and maintained that area in front of those two particular addresses. So, let's see. Also, if you look at the Resolution 213 that was passed on December 17th of December, December 17th of 2013, you'll notice the attachment that says Bulldog Drive, County Road 401. Inclusive of that, if you look at the resolution that's attached to your item number 13, if you look at Bulldog Drive, it also says county road. So at this time, if I could pass out to you and attach to the record, the interlocal agreement between the County of Flagler and the City of Palm Coast, which is dated July of 2001, and it has, it's a 27-page sheet, but it has lists of roadways that were transferred by the county. And Bulldog Drive is not one of them. So I think it would be difficult, it's, again, putting the cart before the horse, which I think I heard tonight, it would be difficult to transfer a roadway by declaring that you built it and maintained it when you, in fact, don't own it at this point in time. So therefore, you couldn't have built it.
While you're passing out, would somebody care to withdraw Agenda Item Number 13 from the consent agenda?
May I?
Please.
Thank you. Sorry, I was...
How many trees did you kill?
You'll make that one, when we're in public.
Who wish to withdraw this item from the consent agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion to withdraw item number 13? Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Well, we're, are you finished with your presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items 10, 11, 12, and 14?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda Item 13, we have a request from an attorney representing Mr. Azram that we table this pending resolution of what appear to be some unresolved issues. Mr. Landon?
Yes, we're actually prepared for this. If you'll pull up the, next, please. This is a very old right-of-way, to say the least. This is back of one of the subdivisions that, original Flagler, the color-coded map shows actually three areas. And Carl, if you could use a pointer to highlight, the subdivision is Midway, and Midway is that area right there with the, that's the old area that we're dealing with. Anything to the right of that is beyond what is actually within the maintenance map. State Road 100 is on the left, so the high school is on the north. And then Mr. Azram, Mr. and Mrs. Azram's property is actually right there where there's a gap in the, if you will, yellow. All right, this is, this is really a, it's been a four-step process, probably. I recently, an email to the county said it was a three-step process, but in looking at this, it's actually more like a four-step process. Because this is old, old right-of-way, what we have done is, City Council has adopted the new right-of-way boundaries for Bulldog Drive, and that is what you see in color, okay? So the purple is property that has recently been transferred from Flagler County School District to the City of Palm Coast. We believe, based on our historians, that probably Bulldog Drive was paved by Flagler County Schools when they built the school. Before that, it was just a dirt road, was very common in this area. On the lower side, kind of the yellow area, are, is right-of-way that the city owns because we bought those lots, fee simple, and have designated them as part of Bulldog Drive. The reason there is a gap is because the Azrams had not sold to the city, and therefore is not included within the right-of-way whatsoever, that's privately owned property. The blue is the area that's in question, and the person who presented this is correct, that is county right-of-way. It is, has not been transferred to the city. That was a surprise to us because we have been, we've always considered ours, our maintenance map showed us as ours, but as you can see by this lengthy document, there are, every street in Palm Coast is listed, page after page, and we missed Bulldog Drive inadvertently. The county administration, the city, we've all considered it a city street and have treated it that way. But the presenter was 100% correct that until the county actually transfers it to the city, if they choose to, they don't have to, but if they choose to, it will, that 25-foot blue strip stays the county. And then further on, actually, all the blue would be county, very likely. So the action in front of you is another step, and unless our attorney tells us differently, there isn't a sequence you have to do these in. But because this is old, old right-of-way, there wasn't any actual dedication-type language on the plat, it just showed a street. And then it had the lots. So what our attorney has advised us, it's best to do, basically, if it was private property, be called a quiet title, and say that by this action, by state law...
This is, this is really a, it's been a four-step process, probably. I recently, an email to the county said it was a three-step process, but in looking at this, it's actually more like a four-step process. Because this is old, old right-of-way, what we have done is, City Council has adopted the new right-of-way boundaries for Bulldog Drive, and that is what you see in color. Okay? So the purple is property that has recently been transferred from Flagler County School District to the city of Palm Coast. We believe, based on our historians, that probably Bulldog Drive was paved by Flagler County Schools when they built the school. Before that, it was just a dirt road, was very common in this area. On the lower side, kind of the yellow area, are, is right-of-way that the city owns because we bought those lots, fee simple, and have designated them as part of Bulldog Drive. The reason there is a gap is because the Azrams had not sold to the city, and therefore is not included within the right-of-way whatsoever. That's privately owned property. The blue is the area that's in question, and the person who presented this is correct. That is county right-of-way. It is, has not been transferred to the city. That was a surprise to us because we have been, we've always considered ours, our maintenance map showed us as ours, but as you can see by this lengthy document, there are, every street in Palm Coast is listed, page after page, and we missed Bulldog Drive inadvertently. The county administration, the city, we've all considered it a city street and have treated it that way. But the presenter was 100% correct that until the county actually transfers it to the city, if they choose to, they don't have to, but if they choose to, it will, that 25-foot blue strip stays the county. And then further on, actually, all the blue would be county, very likely. So the action in front of you is another step, and unless our attorney tells us differently, there isn't a sequence you have to do these in. But because this is old, old right-of-way, there wasn't any actual dedication-type language on the plat, it just showed a street. And then it had the lots. So what our attorney has advised us, it's best to do basically, if it was private property, be called a quiet title and say that by this action, by state law, there is no private interest in this property. It does not in any way encroach on Mr. or Mrs. Azram's property. It is strictly out in the, what has always been since plat occurred, the street or public right-of-way. So this is one step, and then the county transferring it to the city is an additional step. It is not a required step, but it is something that the county commission would have to consider. So that tries to address the issue of what's before you today. As far as maintenance, Carl, if you go to the next slide, this is the picture, a recent picture of what we are talking about. You see the, the actual paved street. Most of that is on property that was owned by the school district that now is owned by the city. The right-of-way line here, or the property line, is actually pretty clear. You have the fence that's very close to right on that property line. You see the telephone poles, which is in the public right-of-way. You see the ditch, or what we oftentimes here call a swale. It is, yes, do the, it's like Mr. Carroll always reminds us that he mows and maintains his swale in front of his property like the rest of you do. That is actually very, very common. But as far as any potholes, any of those trees you see further down when they start encroaching, it has been city staff that has come out to do those, that type of maintenance. So it's pretty, pretty typical city street as far as our maintenance. It's not typical as far as the appearance, but I think everybody knows at this point that we are actually under construction with improving Bulldog Drive, and that's how this issue has come forth. We are not changing the property line whatsoever. This is, we are not encroaching on the Azram's property. We are strictly trying to follow the guidance of our legal counsel that this is a step that needs to occur. And it is, would agree that the county step is still, needs to happen. We have supplied, recently supplied the county administrator with a proposed resolution and, and I believe deed to do exactly that if county commissioners choose to do so. So that's, that is what this item, if you, I will say, if City Council does not approve this, it doesn't really change anything unless the, someone from the past, not, the Azrams have never had any interest, legal interest in this property. It would be the people who platted the property originally that designated this as a city street, that when they owned it, they would be the ones that had title to this at one time. But that was decades ago, many, many years ago, and that's really what the quiet title is all about. Is that helpful?
May I speak to this?
Please.
The 50 feet that he is referring to, even in the interlocal agreement between the Flagler County School Board and Palm Coast, the 50 feet of Bulldog Drive is not owned by the school board. It is owned by Flagler County. So both, the, the land that sits in front of 92 and 108 has been maintained and controlled by the Azrams since 96 and 97. But the other 50 feet is also owned by Flagler County. It is not owned by the school board, and that is referenced in the interlocal agreement dated May 18th of 2010, that I'd also like to attach to the record, that addresses that 50 feet is owned by Flagler County, not Flagler County School Board. And Mr. Landon referenced that it was a city-owned road. That actually can't be possible because your city was incorporated in 1999. It was, it's a county-owned road. Thank you. We'd ask that this be tabled until this is corrected because currently, the city is spending a lot of money on a road that's actually owned by the county. You have a million-dollar contract out there for engineers and pay $5 million for paving that's all on a county road at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The county should thank us.
Mayor, I want to point out that we're also making improvements to the state right-of-way. You know, this, we're not questioning, and I'm not going to get into debate, but we've done the title search, et cetera, as far as a school district, et cetera. Public, actually in this case, CRA dollars are being spent on public right-of-way, state right-of-way, county right-of-way, city right-of-way. It is, you know, it's, it's on public right-of-way and will continue to be owned by the public, and those public dollars are staying on, on that public right-of-way. Whether state or county or city, it's...
All that being said, if we were to table this item, what impact would it have on our contract, on our plans, on our timing schedule?
Zero.
Have you had an opportunity to discuss this with county staff?
Yes. It had no impact on our schedule and contract, once again, because it's, you know, the plans were all submitted to the county a long time ago. We were in design for many years, the county is well aware of, and, and supported this project, just as the state had to support it and was aware of it on, on the city right-of-way, or, excuse me, the state right-of-way. So, and yes, we have been in conversation when this was brought to our attention with county staff, and once again, there's, I can't imagine why the county would want this small strip of something that everybody's referred to as city street. And at least the county administration has indicated they would be very willing to transfer it to the city. But that is a county commission decision, and that has not gone to them, so it would be up to the county commissioners.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your honor, I move that this...
We're going to open it to the public since there is going to be a motion, so are there any questions from counsel?
I have a question.
Mr. Ferguson?
Can this project proceed if the county chooses to not transfer the property to the city?
I'm going to let our attorney, he's got a solution for you that might work.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, counsel, I think one way to resolve all this was simply to be changed, if you look at in your agenda packet under, under the resolution, section seven deals with effective date. We could, we could, if the council were so inclined, they could move to amend section seven so that it would read, "This resolution shall become effective immediately upon the execution of acquitclaim deed of the affected property from Flagler County to the city of Palm Coast." That way, this resolution only becomes effective after there's an actual transfer of whatever interest that Flagler County, if it has any, which is with the purpose of acquitclaim deed from Flagler County to the city of Palm Coast. So that'd be my suggestion to deal with, with that issue.
Okay, since this is no longer on the consent agenda, we'll open the meeting to public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on agenda item number 13? Please give us your name, let me contribute you to three minutes.
My name is Mary Ellen Lenta. I live in the city of Palm Coast. Okay, first of all, I think we need to clarify a few things. The resolution is fundamentally flawed because the statute that it is using to transfer the properties, which do include the road, by the way, and/or the right-of, and/or the right-of-ways, some of which is the road, some which isn't, you're all making it very confusing. However, the statute that you're using is only to be used between a municipality and private property that has been unmaintained. It cannot be used for a taking between municipalities. Therefore, it's entirely invalid and entirely useless to say, "We can adopt this tonight, and then it'll become effective after the county gives us the road." No, when the county gives you the road, you can do what you want with it. But so far, you've been spending money, millions of dollars, totally ignoring a currently thriving, despite what has happened to him in the past, thriving and growing businessman, doing things on Bulldog Drive, the road itself you never owned, never. You have all of these engineering plans based on what, what you plan to do in the future, depending on certain events happening, one of which is that property, which looks pretty bad in that picture because all your silt fencing is up, and, you know, this is after construction was already getting ready to happen. Nice of you to take it at such an inopportune time for Mr. Azram, but your, your resolution as written is invalid, and if passed, I don't even know why you'd want to. However, you know, saying it'll only become effective after everything's in place, again, the city is putting the cart before the horse again. Why are we constantly doing things out of order, confusing the, the public, making us property owner, making the property owners incapable of understanding what their property rights are, having been losing them for the past 10 years? You know, I've seen tonight, it keeps going on and on, switching from PUD to MPD. Well, there happens to be a big difference in Mr. Azram's case because you changed his land use in, in, in the process. And we still can't figure out exactly when that happened, but you changed his land use. And, you know, we're supposed to be an economically, economic development-friendly community here, except for, it seems, certain small businesses. Now, the bottom line is 92 and 108 Bulldog Drive have always, the right-of-ways have always been maintained. So right there, you got to put a little caveat on your, on your resolution. But number two, if the statute on which you base the resolution is not appropriate to pass the resolution, I don't know why the attorney is sitting there advising that we can pass it for the future.
15 seconds, please.
I don't think anything should be passed for the future. I think, I think the city really has to think about what they've done here. They've made a huge mistake. They spent over $5 million or committed over $5 million to date on a road they don't own. Not just the right-of-ways, the road. They never owned the road. So how could you own the right-of-ways? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this agenda item?
Hi, I'm Karen Pio. I live over in our section. That's how you decide where everybody lives here. I've only been here a couple of years. I know nothing about this. As a new graduate of the Citizens Academy, and thank you all very much, please keep this up, and a very, very proud new Palm Coast citizen, I'm a little upset by what I've heard here. Sounds like the only people that really did their homework are them. Again, I don't know anything about it, but I would implore you to take your time and do it the right way first, not make it up later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Dennis McDonald. Didn't think I was going to get another opportunity here, so, but here goes. Sitting here listening to what's going on, and just from some of my background from a lot of years, first question I got for the city is, where's your permit from the county to work on their property? You know, we, we all need permits, we all need approvals. I know Palm Coast is very big on that, so I would be tomorrow looking to see whether there's an approval process in place with the county. That's number one. Because everybody's got to be treated fairly, you know, and it doesn't seem like that goes on here. So the, the other issue here is, we're talking about quiet title, but one of the things that's wide open here that nobody's addressing, and always bringing forward, is Mr. Azram, I believe that's how you say his name, may very well have an adverse possession claim. Quiet title is quite different, but this man has been using this property in an open manner and maintaining it on a 360, 365 days a year, and so he's wide open for an adverse possession claim, and nobody's even discussing it here. You've got a lot of things to square up before you even move ahead on this. So thanks very much for the time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, gentlemen. Not quite tall, is that guy. My name's Don LeBrun. Excuse me?
Your name?
Yeah, Don LeBrun. My wife is a fresh graduate from your, your class, and I'll tell you what, my Monday nights were a little slow. My Monday nights have been rather interesting when she comes home and tells me all about it. I've been involved in county government and state government for 18 years, and I learned some stuff from her. It's pretty good. I, I appreciate what you folks have done with that. Now, I got to ask you a question. I know this area is, I'm fairly new to the area here, but is there, is there something that we, the public, are missing here? Is there some plan for work to be done in this right-of-way, for the right-of-way to be changed in some manner? Or will this gentleman maintain his ingress egress rights? Will he, will he, will be, will he be harmed in any way from what the city's proposing?
We'll get you an answer to that question.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker. Okay, Mr. Landon. Complex question, but the last question, will the property owners be harmed by what the city proposes? Will they have, will they maintain their ingress and egress rights?
They will maintain the ingress and egress. There's two driveways, and they will continue to have those, those two driveways, yes. So they, they will maintain. During construction, we are required to and will continue to maintain access to those driveways also for them.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Back to city council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion? I, for one, would recommend that we table this, that we can follow the appropriate procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Mr. Landon, you got your homework cut out for you. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. It's an opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Could be an item from our previous workshop, or it could be something out of left field, so to speak. Anyone from the public wish to be heard?
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. At the last meeting, or with the meeting with, with our esteemed sheriff, I have to ask a question. Last year, the sheriff gave back to the county, I think it was last year, several thousand dollars. Now, if he, if he can do that and give the county back money, why can't he give us back money? You know, it's, one, you wash hands, when you wash hands, you use both hands. So if he, if he's going to give, I think it was over $100,000 back to the state, to the county, I mean, we should get something back because he doesn't need the money. If he doesn't need the money, he's giving it back. So that means he doesn't need out $2 million, and he should give us some back.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I just want to tell you thank you very much for standing up and tabling that matter. Where I came from, I'd been a witness to, I'm forgetting the words when you take over a property. Eminent domain. We saw it twice in Bristol, Connecticut, and it's a very nasty, nasty thing. This isn't what we're talking about, but I saw what the city council can do. So thank you very much for paying attention.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Evening. Evening. My name's Marsha Baum. I live in Palm Coast. Mine's a pretty easy one. I have an issue with garbage. I didn't realize that when I moved to Palm Coast, you don't have to have a garbage can. I thought I was like, no, you got to be kidding me. And yeah, you can use bags, and that's why we have garbage all over the place. At least in my neighborhood, we do, and I'm sure in some other neighborhoods. People put out garbage bags, the white ones, and the raccoons come out, they're getting it, dragging it down the road. Then you get the big birds coming down, swapping in, dragging it down the road, and then it goes all over. So when you call up the code, code enforcement, they come and they said, "Well, there's nothing we can do because the garbage is not on their property anymore, it's on somebody else's." So they said, "You have to come here and talk to you guys to have a, think pass that everyone has to have a garbage can with a lid." It's an easy solution, gets rid of a lot of the garbage, keeps everything in there, and you can't put it on the ground anymore in plastic bags. That's, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
and you can't put it on the ground anymore in plastic bags. That's nice to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
I'm Janice Brink from Palm Harbor. I always, when I come, I didn't have questions before I came, but some come to mind while I'm listening. I've been here for, since 1989 with ITT. My question is, have we ever had a sinkhole in Palm Coast? The reason I ask is with all the new water needs, I ride up and down 27 and see all of the development in the Clermont area, and I know they have sinkholes that are scary. I don't know if we've ever had any in the area, but in the old days, when ITT used to want a meter for non-drinking water, a lot of people said that that was just a way of getting another meter paid for. But ITT's viewpoint taught to us was that, then they knew what was being used for irrigation as opposed to household use. And the statement was, people in Deltona have sinkholes, and we've never had one here in Palm Coast. So, 25 years have gone by. I'm asking a question because I haven't kept abreast of it. A lot of water is coming out.
Get you an answer. Next speaker.
Mary Ellen Lentigian. First of all, since nobody has, I will very quickly answer the gentleman who asked the question, are your plans for the right of way going to impact the Azrams? And our understanding is that you want to pave eight feet further into the right of way, making his, putting his building even closer to the road, and I think you all saw from the pictures tonight how close to the road the building already is. However, I'm really here for public comment regarding the signage on Route 100, because the other impact to Mr. Azram right now, as of a week ago Monday, is the construction began. Signage went up the Saturday before, the Monday morning that began, and this signage is insane. No left turn. GEA opened for business, pointing left, and then, what is it, a detour to Bulldog Drive, pointing straight ahead, okay? What you've got here is a series of poor planning and poor signage. First of all, I'll tell you what the solution is right now. You have a legal left-hand turn, you have a legal right-hand turn there. I don't know why it says it's not legal, 'cause the DOT said you did? Well, then they didn't understand what you were trying to do. The detour signs should say, "Detour to City Place," not "Detour to Bulldog Drive," because there's only two things on Bulldog Drive, the high school and GEA, and they are open. However, people attempting to get to GEA see these signs, okay, no left turn, but GEA is open for business, but you gotta detour straight ahead. That's insane. It should say, "Detour to City Place." Take away the no-left-hand-turn signs, and yes, keep it clear that GEA is accessible for, GEA and the high school only up until are accessible. There was, up until this week, for the first week, a flashing sign as you turned on saying the road was closed to through traffic. That disappeared, it's made it even worse. Standing outside the building in 10 minutes, I've watched six cars throw U-turns, and now they're late, and they're speeding out, you're creating a serious danger situation, more dangerous traffic situation. I've had countless senior citizens stop in our parking lot, asking us, how do I get to the movie theater? You know, you've gotta make, I don't know why you can't make this clear, where the traffic flow is during this project. I was also told you were gonna stay on the north end till you finish the north end, and then you would move down to the south end in front of our property, excuse me, where I work. You know, we're like a family there. And all of a sudden, in this past week, everything seems to slow down on the north end of the street, and they're clearing left and right. Talk about, who's asking about the trees? 'Cause all these trees just came down, they just cleared these lots, all in the past two days. And who's keeping track of that? Anyway, I really just want the signage fixed, because it's confusing our customers, and it's confusing people who are trying to get to City Center or City Place, whatever it's called. And someone's gotta figure this out and fix it. I think I gave you the solution. I hope somebody can come up with something and make those signs a lot faster than they did to get our sign pointing to us there on time for construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Coming. Coming. Mr. Brady's on his way. My name is John Brady, and I live in Palm Coast. You may want the shirt back after I gave it a speaking, but you're not getting it. I'm hearing that we, whether we are federal taxpayers, state taxpayers, or Palm Coast taxpayers, have spent $5 million in a project that we don't own. Somebody needs to be paying more attention. End of story.
Thank you. Next speaker.
This is off, no, it's on. Sorry. We've heard an awful lot back and forth in all the newspapers about the issue with the SOE and holding the election for the city. So, I wanted to come and ask the council and the mayor to make sure that the SOE has afforded every opportunity to get that done for us, because, in case you haven't ever looked at the election returns, she is without question the biggest vote getter as far as plurality in returning her as an incumbent. And I don't, I still, I've written to a number of you, and I still don't understand what the big deal was about having the opportunity, since for three months, we've been going through this thing about weeks is wrong, weeks is wrong, all the time from the news media and you guys feeding that stuff to her, to the news media about her. Why you didn't take the opportunity to get an Attorney General's opinion, which I have seen the letters, you're the only entity that can ask for that decision, you know, and nobody else can. So, I don't understand why you're not doing that, but here's the thing, if you don't do it, because what we see here is, there's a whole another set of rules for the city of Palm Coast and everything that we've been doing. And so, there is a way to compel the city to get an answer from the Attorney General, so we aren't stuck with a lawsuit later on by somebody challenging the results of the election that's upcoming. And that is a little word called, or a couple words called, "Rid of mandamus." And that's used when officials do not do their job, and so consequently, you take them to another level, and you have a judge inform them of exactly what their job is and how they should be doing it. So, we don't really need to go there. It's simple. This thing costs us nothing, it takes very little time. It should've been done months ago, gentlemen. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seated on approach to podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, get back to council. I'll take a shot at the first question about the sheriff's department and the money that is returned to the county. The sheriff provides a budget to the county. That budget includes contingencies, I would presume. If that money is not spent, then it's only appropriate that it go back to the county, as is often the case in Palm Coast. You may budget a certain amount of money, but you don't necessarily spend it. If you don't spend it, it goes back into reserves, in essence. But this is a different issue with the city. We have a contract with the sheriff that calls for a per-unit cost. The sheriff fulfills the contract, we're liable for the terms of the contract. So, that, in a nutshell, is why, while the sheriff rebates money to the county, he doesn't rebate to us. Second issue was raised about the issue of garbage cans, bags or cans. That's something we can talk about. I would point out to the speaker, though, that one of the largest residential areas in central Florida, the Villages, prohibits the use of garbage cans. You must put it out in bags. So, it's an issue for discussion, but I agree that plastic bags sometimes aren't as containing as they might otherwise be.
Mr. Mayor? I would like, I would like us to review that, look at, look at that portion of the ordinance and discuss it at a future workshop, please.
Mr. Landon, put that on your list of things to talk about at a workshop.
Will do.
Sinkholes, again, I'd probably defer to Mr. Abreu or Mr. Moden, the city engineer, but sinkholes typically occur where you have a limestone substrate that is eroded by water. That is not typical of the strata underneath the city of Palm Coast. Mr. Moden, do you have any insights on the sinkholes in Palm Coast? We've never had one.
Well, I've been here since 1977, and we have never, I've never experienced or been told of one that I'm aware of, and you are exactly right on the geology. They call it a karst geology, which is, is where sinkholes are prevalent. We don't have it in Palm Coast. And as far as the rainwater...
John, come forth, please.
I'm sorry. As far as the rainwater, we've had plenty of rain this year, which has been more than ample, so my experience has been no sinkholes in Palm Coast.
Please repeat the first part now that you're at the microphone.
I'm sorry. The first part, I have been here since 1977. It has been my experience since I've been here that I have not experienced, not documented, seen any sinkholes. We have seen subsidence of ground, and when we've checked that out, it's usually buried debris of that nature. In one case, we had a stump that had deteriorated, and they put fill around it, so that over time it appeared to be a sinkhole. Reports that I've had, or pipes that have had holes in them, things of that nature. But no sinkholes.
Thank you. The issue of the turn lanes on Bulldog Drive, this is an issue that I've raised with the city. I do think we need to have more clarity there.
Yeah, I would agree with the speaker that the no-left, no-right was very confusing and inappropriate, and the contractor, I believe, has already pulled those down, and they're no longer there.
Are they still there?
I'm getting a yes and a no, but if...
They're still there.
If they're still there, we need to have those removed immediately. That'll happen tomorrow at the latest, if they're not already removed. And it would, really needs to read, and I think our traffic engineers are working with the contractor to get that up there, it says no through traffic, because you don't want people turning there, because they hit a dead end because of the construction. We'll also look at the suggestion that instead of saying Bulldog Drive detour, with the idea that Bulldog Drive is closed, is to say the Lake Place, which is, lines up with Bulldog Drive, which you hit Central Avenue, which is the office building people are trying to get to. We'll take a look at that, that suggestion also.
To me, if you say no through traffic to Lake Place, that means nothing to me. If you say no through traffic to Town Center, would make, would be a lot more clear, I would think. But anyway, let's, we need to, we need to look at that.
Okay.
The last issue, the supervisor of elections. Mr. Reich, rid of mandamus?
Well, let me start with saying that, while the city has not heard anything directly from the supervisor in response to our most recent communications, both verbal and writing, we did become aware just this afternoon that the supervisor chose to communicate with the city through a letter to the editor in one of our local medias, in which she indicated that she would be submitting to the city council, to the city of Palm Coast, a proposed in a local agreement for her to work with the city to conduct the 2014 elections, including those for the two city council seats. If this is indeed the case, and as I indicated, that we have not heard, we've not heard, I've never heard from the supervisor. She's never communicated with me. So, if this is indeed the case, you know, we are very pleased and look forward to working with her office, and look forward to her cooperation and preparation, the necessary documentation, so that our city clerk and supervisor's office can agree that she will be working to supervise, which is her responsibility, the elections that are in 2014. Mr. Mayor, as far as rid of mandamus, rid of mandamus is available to, it's a court order where some governmental officer fails to fulfill a mandatory duty, mandatory obligation. In this particular instance, the speaker indicated that it would be available to force the city of Palm Coast to obtain an Attorney General's opinion pertaining to, as I understand, the point that was being made, the legality of the process in the 2011 referendum. That decision, whether or not to seek Attorney General opinion, is a discretionary one with this council, and rid of mandamus would be unavailable. With that said, of course, I will say again, and that is, is that any objections and concerns that the supervisor of elections may have had with regard to the 2014, excuse me, 2011 referendum election were eliminated, as has been confirmed by the county attorney, by the Department of State Attorney, and by, and I've said it many times, by the action taken by this council in January and February of this year to amend our charter through ordinance, which is specifically authorized by the Florida statutes, specifically Section 100.3605 of the Florida statutes.
Thank you. This brings us to discussion by City Council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire?
Nothing.
Mr. Lewis?
Nothing.
Mr. DeLorenzo?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferguson?
I have nothing, sir.
I do have one item. I recently received a copy of a resolution passed by the city commissioner of Flagler Beach. It was a resolution in support of the county's request that the Florida legislature rescind the preemption of local land use regulations which relates to short-term vacation rentals. I'm speaking with the city manager of Flagler Beach. He indicated that this is of some issue in Flagler Beach, but not significant, but he suggested that we might want to consider a letter of support also. So, I put that to your consideration. I don't think it would have to be a resolution. It could be a resolution. It could simply be a letter on my behalf, representing the city council in support of Flagler County's petition, if you will, to the Florida legislature. Any thoughts on the matter?
I don't have that much information to make that decision.
That's what I was gonna say as well. I haven't seen petition. I'm loosely familiar with what they're trying to do.
Mr. Landon, let's put that on our next workshop agenda, then, and I'll provide you with a copy of the Flagler Beach resolution.
Your honor, is this, is this in any way dovetail with what the county commission is doing relative to rental property in the hammock?
It's exactly what it is.
I know some of the county commissioners will be in Tallahassee yet again tomorrow to pursue this.
The, for the benefit of the public, the issue is, in the previous, like, two years ago, the Florida legislature passed preemptive legislation that said if a local government does not have an ordinance in place at that time regulating short-term vacation rentals, then that regulation was preempted by the state. The argument that was made in favor of it is that short-term vacation rentals of property are an economic factor, and in the downturn of the economy, the state felt that it was very important that we not inhibit private property owners from gaining revenue from their properties. Flagler County did not have an ordinance in place prior to this preemption. What has happened is that in the hammock area, homes have been constructed purportedly with 10 bedrooms, nine bathrooms, a dining facility for 24 people, and parking for two, and that these homes were then being rented out on a short-term basis, creating a significant disturbance within the community. That's the issue. Constant turnover of tenants, parking, and all of the things that are associated with short-term vacation rentals. The county is asking the state of Florida to rescind the preemption to allow local government to make local land use regulations. Essentially, home rule. I tend to support it. If local government wants short-term vacation rentals, then allow it. If they don't, disallow it. But nobody better knows local land use regulations than local government. So, anyway, I will provide a copy at the next workshop of the Flagler Beach resolution... So, anyway, I will provide a copy at the next workshop of the Flagler Beach resolution in support of the county, and perhaps we might ask one of the county commissioners to even come in and give us their perspective. Mr. Landon, put that on your, on our agenda.
To invite the A-county commissioner, is that what?
Yeah, or somebody. The county, and this is primarily a county issue, so if a county commissioner wishes to come, and as Mr. Maguire indicates, I believe several county commissioners. Mr. County Commissioner, are you going to Tallahassee tomorrow?
Actually, it's been postponed to the following week, but the next councilman, Meeker, and myself, and the representatives to the legislature.
Would you or Mr. Meeker be available at our next workshop?
Sure, either or both.
Okay. Very good. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Just a reminder, Bulldog Drive is exciting. Palm Coast Parkway is supposed to start this week, so it is going to be just as exciting as Bulldog, probably more so. The only difference is we won't be blocking it, obviously, through traffic.
Mr. Landon, since you bring that up, at the risk of being somewhat of, and I told you so, I questioned several months ago whether or not we were putting too much on our plate. We have an awful lot of projects. Bulldog Drive is just one of many, many projects that the city is undertaking, and I'm still kind of concerned that we're stretching our staff thinner than they should be, but that's what we pay you the big bucks for.
I can tell you, they are stretched thinner than they should be. There's no question about it. But, once again, great deal of effort, high quality, and, you know, your end product will be something you'll be very proud of. I'm very confident in that.
Mr. Landon, in regards to, do you, in the six-lane project, do you happen to have the web address for the project handy that you could announce? Because I've had several people ask me, and I'm not sure what it is.
Carl would be...
It's an abbreviation of something. PC, I don't know.
Hang on.
PalmCoastPKwy.com? Okay. So you can find out scheduling there of the project, okay?
It's actually, it's on the front of our website also, with a button, a big icon you can go to, and that's palmcoorgov.com.
Anything else, Mr. Landon?
That's all I have.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I move we adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.